Are you doing well as?
As well as can be expected. David, what time is housing task for Monday night? 5:30?
Yes, 5:30.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, Rosemary.
How's everybody?
Doing good.
Good.
Enjoying our, the last Indian summer.
Yeah, I know. What a, what a great few weeks we've had. It's really been wonderful.
Well, that's not handy. Two, thank you. Michael, just see you ma'am, may, he'll be on shortly. This computer decided to do an update. And I will be right back.
Hey, folks. Sorry for the delay. And strangely, I don't know, it's let me in, but it still says Zoom isn't selling updates. So at any moment, I expect I might disappear. Nonetheless, it being 5:34, call this meeting of the Berry City Planning Commission to order. And if I, uh, let's see. Uh, if I drop off suddenly, uh, disappear, Amanda, you can take the reins. Um, I expect it's just gonna stay frozen. It's forever. So we'll be fine. Okay, anyhow. First up, are there any adjustments to the agenda this evening? All right, we're not making any adjustments. So everyone had a chance to, uh, to review the minutes and, uh, Joe, I want to thank you for making nice minutes and making sure that they get published and everything, saying on top of all this stuff.
Well, sure, of course.
Much appreciated.
And I do want to make a quick note on that. So there are two things. So first, I think last week, or actually two weeks ago, Amanda suggested sort of keeping more details for the, the part about the, um, the discussion of the application one. So I put pretty heavy details into that section. The only other thing I want to mention is at one point, Becky had asked a question and it was sort of interspersed with different commentary. So I, rather than sort of have it in the middle of a larger discussion, I kind of put it at the end by itself. So just to.
Yeah, I, I think, I think clarity is more important than, than, uh.
Yeah, just want to make a note of it.
Great, thanks. All right, well, uh, if no one has any changes to, uh, to suggest to those minutes, here a motion to approve the minutes.
Agreed.
All right, there's a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Okay, I'll, I'll take Joe's second, I guess. Um, all right, all in favor of adopting those minutes?
Hi.
You can raise, raise your hand or say, yeah. All right, uh, all opposed? All right, since it's unanimous, we can recognize that as passing. I'll adopt those minutes. Uh, next up, uh, public comment. So if there's, uh, there's anyone present who'd like to communicate something to the planning commission about something that is not on the agenda, um, now's the, now's the time to go ahead and do that. And I'm guessing that, uh, our, our attendees are here for the presentation. So. Not hearing any public content, uh, comment, rather. Oh, go on to new business. Our first item of new, that new business, um, five, one is presentation about a uh, proposed solar installation. And, uh, as we noted in the last meeting, we don't have any decision making around this. Um, but it's very nice for the people who are making these changes to come and explain them to us, and we appreciate that. Thanks. Janet, I don't know if you have anything to add before, uh, before we, we hand it over.
Uh, yeah, just, uh, quickly, as a planning commission, um, you have the ability to make recommendations back to Encore Renewable Energy based on what's in our zoning. Um, that's why I'm invited Ralph and his team here today. Thank you very much. And by way of introduction, Ralph Mima, I love Cow Solar LLC. Take it away.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody for, uh, allowing us to come and visit you this evening. Um, my name is Ralph Mima. I work for, uh, Encore Renewable Energy. We're a Burlington-based um, solar developer, starting to do, uh, other things related to renewable energy like batteries. Uh, we were started in Burlington in 2007. And now we operate in a number of states, but Vermont is still very much our home. Um, we're sort of spread around the state. I'm actually speaking to you from Brattleboro, which is where I live. Within the last couple of weeks, uh, you should have received what we call a 45-day notice of intent to file for a certificate of public good with the Public Utility Commission for a solar array, uh, located just west of Allen Street that we've actually been working on for a number of years. The, uh, we actually bought the property from the Lambert family, uh, although it's continued to be farmed over the past couple of years as we, as we figured out how to move ahead. And we bought the property with an eye to building a solar array there, uh, under the so-called standard offer program, which is a state program that, um, permits a certain number of, of decent sized solar arrays to be built in the state and interconnect with the electric grid. Um, that, that program has pretty much ended and we, we just didn't manage to get in at the, at the tail end. But we have other ways in which, uh, we can, um, we can finance and, and, uh, you know, put this, this array to use. So we're, we'd like to continue with the original plan, which is to build a 2.2 megawatt uh, solar array on that property and, uh, have Green Mountain Power as a customer. Although, uh, we don't exactly know what, you know, what form that's going to take yet. So we're still working on the business model, uh, discussing negotiating with the GMP. I can just say a few general things about the array. So I said a 2.2 megawatts AC uh, would connect with the electric grid, would in fact would connect with a, uh, three-phase power line that runs along Allen Street. The, the array would occupy around 12, 12 and a half acres in a parcel that is more like 25 or 26 acres. Uh, most of the parcel can't be used for anything like this because there are a lot of wetlands, there are steep slopes. There's a transmission line that runs through the middle of it, uh, with a, with a right of way. So we're using the land that's kind of left over, uh, that, that could be, you know, permitted for this use. Um, and, um, there's, there should be, well, there's a, there's a map that was included in the 45-day notice materials that should be in your packet. Um, I'm not gonna jinx things by trying to put it up on my screen here at the same time. Let's see. So just very briefly, the schedule we're on is that we hope to file for a CPG, a certificate of public good by the end of this year, or, you know, really early into next year. And then we don't know how long it's going to take to obtain. Sometimes they go as quickly as three or four months. Sometimes they can take six months to a year. Uh, sort of depends on the PUC's workload and other factors. So this right now is an opportunity for us to answer questions and, uh, note concerns. And then build them into the certificate of public good application itself, which will also be sent to you, to the select board, to the regional commission. Uh, so there, you know, we go through a number of iterations of, of, um, you know, speaking with, with neighbors and the public and, um, making necessary changes to, to the design to make sure that it's, it's, you know, consistent with, uh, local and regional plans, acceptable to the community. Um, you know, able to do what it, what it needs to do. So I should, I think I'll stop here and, uh, open it up to questions, but I'm happy to answer every question I, I'm, I'm able to.
Uh, David?
Hi, thanks for, uh, presenting. Yeah, I do have a few questions, which maybe will just help me understand a little bit better, but, um, you know, I, I'm assuming this is on primag land and that, is there going to be any agricultural use available to it, or is it going to pretty much fill up space?
Well, I can say a few different things and, and that they're basically what I told the, the, um, the CV RPC last week, and that is that most of the land that it's located on is, um, is classified as statewide of statewide interest, uh, and that means it's primary egg soil. There's a lot on that property that's not primary agricultural soil as well. And as you would expect, that's the, that, those are the areas that are not cultivated for crops. That does not, or that, that is never recognized as a reason not to do solar, but it's true that during the time that a solar array is located on 12 of these acres, they would not be, it would not be possible to, uh, use them for traditional agriculture. Um, at the same time, uh, first of all, building a, a ground-mounted solar array as, as we propose to do uh, involves driving stainless steel I-beams into the ground. And they don't actually disturb the soil except where the, where the, the, the stake goes in. And then when they're removed, the soil will simply go back to the way it was before. Uh, we don't use, we, we, uh, you only use tracked vehicles, so it's not to compact the soils too much and so forth. So you know, it could be argued that the land will be fallow, but not disturbed. The topsoil won't be removed, there won't be poured concrete, uh, no chemicals be sprayed on the land and so forth while there's an array there. What more I can say about it though, is that, uh, first of all, we are now in almost all of the arrays we're doing using, uh, practices where the land is, uh, at the very least, um, seeded with cover crops, but, um, more and more frequently is actually landscaped with a, um, seed mix that, that leads to both annuals and perennials that, um, support pollinator populations, birds, insects and bats in the area. So, um, I don't have that, it, it will be in our application package. I don't have material prepared at this point. But, um, at the very least, look for, uh, pollinator, um, seed mixes on the land. And, you know, there you, then you end up with a, a fenced enclosure of, of 12 acres that, um, becomes a very rich habitat for the kinds of species that depend on, on those kinds of, of plants. Going beyond that, I, I, what I, what I want you to just be aware of, and you, you may have already heard of this, although uh, at this point, I can't say whether or not it's going to be in the plan is that it's also becoming, uh, more and more common to do what's called, uh, dual-use solar or even agrivoltaics, where you can do things like gray sheep. You can, uh, grow berries, you can use, you can do other things in the rows and under the panels of a solar array that are, are a productive agricultural use. And um, I think that we're, we're highly likely to, um, uh, to use sheep, uh, for, uh, basically clearing the growth of woody vegetation, keeping the, keeping the, the plantings down. So they don't overwhelm the panels. More than that, I, I don't know what the chances are, but I, I, I think there's a very good likelihood that we're going to, uh, be using sheep. Um, assuming that they're available. And this is, this is also like a, like an emerging service business at the moment.
Yeah, um, another question, again, just to understand, uh, I assume that a solar array has a lifespan. Uh, what happens at the end of that lifespan and who's responsible for, uh, dealing with it?
That's good, good question. Um, first of all, the lifespan can be expected to be at least, uh, 30 to 35 years. And there's very little degradation in the output of the panels during that period of time. Uh, we estimate that it's about half a percent of power output a year. But more and more, it, it appears to be actually less than that. Uh, the panels are warranted for 25 years. The certificate of public good is a 20-year, uh, CPG. The land, well, we own the land, so we're not even leasing it from anybody. Typically, the leases are 25 years. So that gives you a, a sense of the overall timeframe, 20 to 25 to 35 years. However, uh, because this is more than a megawatt, uh, we are required to include a decommissioning plan in our application to the PUC. And we, we have to figure out and present a way to pay for it. Uh, and it, it will be through some kind of, of bond that is, um, you know, gradually paid in over the course of the, uh, the array's lifetime, so that there's money available at the end to restore the land back to its original condition. Um, having said that, you know, probably in 10 to 15 to 20 years, there's going to be a lot of public policy conversation around the state, about the state and, and also at local levels about whether to continue to, to reuse sites like this uh, for renewable power generation versus some other purpose. So it's kind of hard to predict, but, um, decommissioning is, is, uh, taken care of.
Um, anybody else, uh, for, you know, questions or thoughts? Amanda?
Hi, thank you very much for coming and speaking to us this evening.
Thanks.
I would be interested to hear your perspective on, uh, what specific benefits might be accrued to the city of Berry based on having this solar field cited here? Are there any specific property tax benefits? Discounts on solar for the city government or, or anything? I mean, I know that in Sparkish, but anything like that, that you can tell us about this evening?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Um, so there are a number of different ones. Um, one is that there is a solar text, there's a, there's a state solar text and a local solar text. And I can tell you that the state solar tax, um, is $4 per kilowatt. So, uh, in this case, we're talking, um, 2,200 kilowatts times $4. And what is that? Uh, $8,800? Yep. Um, so, so there's a, there's an, an $8,800 uh, annual solar tax to the state that goes into the state, um, education fund. Then there's a, there's a similar local solar tax. Um, I, I can't, I don't know what the number is because I would have to look at, at Barry's tax rate. And of course, that tax rate will change as well over time, but it's calculated based on the tax rate and a few other things, including the, the size of the array. And it usually runs a, a little bit more than the state tax. So I'm, I'm just sort of guessing the state, I mean, the town rather, the city would, would be receiving, um, you know, probably somewhere between $8,800 and $10,000 a year, uh, in, in, um, solar tax. And that's on top of the ordinary land tax. The, we, you know, the green or rather Encore owns the, uh, parcel. So Encore is already paying taxes on that land. I would assume it's in current use. And, um, it'll have to be, the footprint for the array will have to be withdrawn from current use. And so it'll become a non-current use, you sort of, you know, full freight uh, tax rate that the, the town receives or the city receives. I gotta stop that. I live in Brattleboro and I keep saying town. That, so, so this, so there will be ordinary land tax revenue and solar equipment tax revenue going to the city. Um, the other thing is that you know, on a statewide basis, we have these, um, renewable energy goals that, that were set in the comprehensive energy plan years ago. And each, uh, RPC region and each municipality has quotas, has targets. And I, I haven't, I, I should do this. I have not checked how far along the city of Berry is to covering its own renewable energy quota. Maybe somebody knows. Um, but this would count toward it. Um, it would, it would be a sizable step toward covering your cities, your municipality's share of the statewide, uh, renewable energy target.
I don't know that off the top of my head, Ralph. I know the Regional Planning Commission is keeping an eye on that, so I can get that information for everybody.
Yeah, and you can actually probably get a spreadsheet from, um, the Regional Planning Commission that is broken down so that you can see exactly what the target is for every town and city that's, that's within the RPC area. And then you can see how much of it, you know, currently exists and how many, how much of it still remains to be built.
And just so you know, Ralph, that property is not in current use.
Oh, it's not? Okay, that makes it simpler. So it'll just continue, the underlying tax will just continue to be paid. And you know, solar arrays like this, as long as, as the folks around them don't mind the way they look, are very, uh, quiet and, um, harmonious neighbors. There's no traffic. There's no sound. There are no kids going to school, even though that's not a bad thing necessarily, but, um, the, the burden on, uh, on municipal services is very, very light. So to, just sits there and operates.
Can I ask just a brief follow-up, Ralph, which is the, um, that solar tax, the local solar tax you described? Is that something that's described in state law, or is that something that Berry City would have to take up separately?
Um, we, well, let's see. I mean, I think that, uh, the way I've seen it normally done is that, um, the, uh, the town's tax assessors or listers are usually in direct contact with the Department of Taxes. Um, there is a formula called the, um, I think it's called the Sandia Formula, S A N D I A Formula, that's used to calculate this tax. And I, there is someone at the Department of Texas who knows how to do that. And I forget, I forget, uh, his name, but they're, they're very, very familiar with this because it's being calculated in literally every town in the state.
Mike, I guess my specific question is, is, um, it, I'm sorry, Michael, is this something that the planning commission would have to recommend to, to city council to, to take up and, and set as municipal policy, um, before the array goes in? Um, or as it doesn't automatically kick in, you know, we know it's going to be this much. It's just a matter of administrative, uh, work to figure out what the rate is going to be.
I think it's very much the latter. I've, I've never seen it come up as an issue or, or require any special decisions.
Okay.
Um, it's a, it's a standard, both the state and the local solar taxes are, are very standardized around the state. And I see that my colleague, uh, Jake has just, uh, just joined us as well.
Yep, sorry I'm late. I, I couldn't get into the meeting, but I'm here now. Apologies.
Yes, apparently the link doesn't work on the agenda, but you can just sign in the way the rest of you have. So we'll make sure it works better next time.
Uh, sir, anything else on the, the planning commission with, uh, something to add? Uh, David, go ahead.
Another question, is there, you, you mentioned there'd be a fence around the whole array? Is there any landscaping or, or anything that might help make the view more harmonious to the neighbors? Cause there are some, some, uh, there is some housing quite close to, to this location.
Yep, um, I can definitely speak to that. The array will be surrounded by a seven-foot, um, agricultural fence. Um, and, um, I think Jake, we, we'll be using a fence with wooden fence posts, most, most likely, like four by fours. Um, and, uh, no, not four by fours. Yeah, four by four treated wooden fence posts. And, and it's, it's that agricultural, um, fencing material that is, is kind of like a woven darkish color that has, um, cells that are a little bit larger down near the ground and then, then get bigger or or the other way. I can't remember. Um, but it's, it's, it tends to blend into the landscape and it's not anywhere near as visible as like a chain link fence or something like that. Um, you know, if, if you really wanted, if you are a deer or a moose, you know, really wanted to, to push it over, you could, it wouldn't be too difficult, but it, it, it functions as an, as a deterrent for, um, people and, you know, large animals walking through the array and, and, uh, it really forces people to go around it. However, it doesn't, it, it doesn't, uh, mask the visibility of the panels of the modules themselves. And we're very aware that along the eastern side of the parcel, you know, you, you know, on the western side of Allen Street, you have, um, some buildings that belong to the, uh, to the school district. And then you have some apartment buildings down toward the, the, the lower end of, of the, uh, the, uh, that, that piece of land immediately east of the array. Um, and then across the street, you have the, uh, Green Acres Apartments. And currently, it's very easy to, to look up into that field. So we have, um, we've got a project underway with a, with a consulting firm that's also Vermont-based, done a lot of work like this to figure out what kind of, um, screening vegetation along the eastern edge of the array outside the fence would be enough to make the array more or less invisible, or at least blend into the landscape well. Uh, and, and reduce the visual impact on people who live across, uh, Allen Street. Um, that study is underway, but it will be included in the, in the application package.
If I could just add one comment to the, um, to the, the fencing, Ralph. The Agency of Natural Resources is a statutory party to every certificate of good proceeding at the Public Utility Commission. And in past cases, they've expressed to us the desire to have, um, the fencing such that smaller wildlife, you know, your, um, raccoon or, or possum or, um, you know, smaller rodents can pass through. raccoon or, or possum or, you know, smaller rodents can pass through the fence. And as Ralph said, the fence that we use is an agricultural style fence that's really meant for large scale grazing, and it's really quite sort of invisible in the landscape. And to save money in your typical application, the, the, the weave is denser at the bottom and, and it's more open at the top. Yeah. What the Agency of Natural Resources typically asks us to do is to install it upside down so that the openings are larger at the bottom of the fence. And, and that allows for the, a, a lot of smaller wildlife to be able to, to, to pass through. And the, the the fence is necessary for insurance purposes and for national electric code compliance as well. So just wanted to add those sort of elements to the picture.
Thanks, Jake. Amanda?
Fairly easy to answer question. On the scale of other solar installations going up around the state, whereas this is the top 10 middle tier in terms of size and, and generation of power.
Oh, you know, that's a good question. So keep in mind a 2.2 megawatts, which is what this would be. Around the state, there are a lot of 2.2 megawatt arrays. I, I couldn't tell you how many, but I pulling numbers out of the air. Thirty, forty. Because that was the largest size that you could build a standard offer project at. There are a lot of arrays that are clustered around smaller sizes. You'd see them all over the place as well. And they tend to run from a hundred and fifty to five hundred kilowatts. And those were part of what used to be called the net metering, or still is the net metering program. So not, not a very active program nowadays. At the larger end of the scale, there are a few larger sort of five megawatt or in that vicinity projects around the state too. There's actually one being built and built right now in Berry Town by, by a different developer. And, you know, we've, we've done a few and are continuing to work on a few other five, five megawatt projects, which are, you know, approximately twice the size of what we're proposing for your city. And you know, it'd be interesting, actually, one of us would, should, should go out and count them now, just to give people an accurate answer to that question. But, you know, around the state, we, we alone have done, I think at this point, close to seventy such projects in Vermont. Non-residential, in other words, commercial and industrial sized projects. So if, if we alone account for seventy of them, then the rest of our industry probably accounts for another, I don't know, three hundred and fifty. And, and so this, this array would be, you know, on the large side, but still in a very, with, it'll have a lot of company on that particular scale. We should get those numbers together because interesting to, to see how it's all all shaking out.
David?
Yeah, just as piece of information for planning commissioners, there, there's another solar array that's going in the Long Island Street right by Booth Brothers, a little farther in, in Berry Town. And I think there's two other ones in the works in Berry Town as well. So there's actually quite a bit of solar arrays being proposed or built in, in, in our area right now. Just, just for sharing information, I guess.
Becky?
Yeah, I just want to point out, there's a, a website called the Vermont Energy Atlas. So if you want to get an idea of, like, if you can picture a solar array that you pass in your life, driving around whatever you're doing, you can go look at a map and see how, you look at this website and see how big it is, just as a point of comparison. So one that I know about is in East Mount Pelear off Route Two, kind of like tucked away behind the, the buildings along Route Two there. So that's a almost five hundred kilowatt installation. So that would be roughly a quarter of the size, I think, of what we're talking about here. So that's a great website. I'll drop it in the chat if anybody's interested in that, because then you can kind of a little bit have a point of reference for what this will look like.
You know, just to, to add to that, many of you might be Washington Electric customers, but if you go to Green Mountain Power's website, Green Mountain Power has two interesting maps that have a lot of this kind of information. And one of them is called the, the GMP Solar Map. And it, there's a little Starburst icon for every array that is interconnected with the grid. And if you click on it, you can get the details of that array and you can, you can zoom in or back out and look all over the state and where solar arrays are now located from, from quite small ones on up to the, to the big ones. So it's all there.
Amanda?
It recently passed, I believe it was in Bridgens, the solar array that had a small panel explaining to people passing by what it was all about. Would you, would you be interested or willing to put some informational pieces in at the site or to provide occasional public access for tours? I mean, obviously guided, right? We're not just letting people wander, but occasional public access for informational tours and such for, for people from Berry City?
I would be more than happy to arrange a walking tour. Either, you know, during construction or once the array is, is up and running. So that's not a problem at all. And we, we often do that. In terms of something that's actually written, I can look into it certainly. And then some people are also interested in the, the power output, like to actually see how much energy, you know, the arrays are generating. And I don't know if that's in the cards for this particular array. It often depends on who's actually buying the power from it. But I could also look into that.
Ralph, just to follow up on that, once the project is generating electricity, access inside the fence within the array can be complex. You know, we'd have to arrange for we'd have to have contact with our insurance company first and we'd have to sign consents because consent forms because you are walking around in an area where electricity is being generated. So there are some elements of danger. And a second comment is in some previous projects where we've had educational facilities as neighbors, we have been interested to explore a mechanism, I think most likely at this point, it would it would be a website to allow for access to some information demonstrating what level of electricity is being generated at any particular time, or maybe or on a, on a weekly or monthly basis so that students would have some ability to interface with the data that's being, you know, the, the data that shows what the project is doing. So it is something that we'd like to explore and it's something that we've worked on in the past with other, as I said, like sort of educational facilities as neighbors.
Rosemary?
Hi, thank you for coming tonight. It's really very interesting topic for sure. What about maintenance of the, of the array? I mean, once it's up and running, do you find that there's a lot of maintenance required? What would that mean if so? And no, and, and how, how would that affect the city at all?
So that's a good question. In general, solar arrays like this are very low maintenance. That's not to say, though, that sometimes there isn't something like a hailstorm or a windstorm or something that, you know, leads to broken modules that need to be replaced or other things that need to be troubleshoot. You, you just can't predict that part, but under normal circumstances, you know, our, our maintenance tech would probably only need to get into the, the array you know, a couple of times a year. And similarly, you know, whether we were using sheep or or a brush hog, you know, somebody would have to come in maybe once a season to cut back the woody vegetation. Arrays like that are very, very closely monitored online. And the, the person or the, you know, the, the team doing the monitoring, we call it asset management, doing the monitoring can actually see whether or not the electricity being produced by the array is what it's supposed to be. And if it's not, if it's falling short, it's because something's gone wrong somewhere possibly, or else because it's covered in snow that hasn't melted and sloughed off yet. And but if, if it's, you know, what, whether it's snow or something else, they're aware of what's going on and they can, they can I, they can isolate where there might be a fault down to a panel or even just a, a smaller region of a panel. And then they would, of course, send somebody out in a pickup truck to, to fix it if, if necessary. But it's, it's a very, even if you lived near there, you, you, you really wouldn't notice much activity like this because it's, it's rare and it's, it's pretty unintrusive.
Thank you.
Anything from, from anyone else? Well, I would just like to add that I am enthusiastic about this project. You know, we need this generation infrastructure and I'm glad that you've got a site nearby that looks like it's working. So I, I wish you the best of luck. I, I have some friends who used to live next to that, that site in East Mount Pelear that Becky was talking about. And, you know, it's a good neighbor. So I, I, I hope that, you know, I hope that our neighbors are able to experience something so positive.
Great. Well, thank you. Thanks for setting aside the time for us to come and speak with you tonight.
Yes, thanks for coming.
Okay. Good night.
All right. Yeah. Have a good night.
You too.
All right. Next up on our agenda is what reads as approval of council's municipal planning grant resolution for application. But what it turns out to be is really approving it in advance because we're, it's not in front of the, the council yet. So I think that that is, I mentioned, mentioned this to Janet and she's unconcerned. So I think that's going to be okay. Backstory on that a little bit, though, as you can see, it is on our agenda. So having talked to Janet, we think that there's, you know, enough bandwidth to get the application through. But as you'll note, and I, this is, this is my characterization, what's, what's in the application so far is, is, you know, is pretty minimal as far as the like the, you know, the full application. Is that, is that right? Or am I seeing it right, Janet?
Yes.
Yeah. So, so kind of what we're doing is we're approving something that doesn't exist. And so that is, if that gives people the willies in some way, we don't have to do it. But that's, you know, that, the, the timeline being what it is, that's the only resources that were available was to get the ball rolling a tiny, tiny bag. Did you have anything else? Anyone, anything you wanted to say, Janet?
No, no, you covered it all.
Okay, all right.
I, I believe, like I said to you folks two weeks ago, it's worth a shot. Why not? And it's one of the things that is on our capital improvement plan. The consultants went through the, the municipal plan, hazard mitigation plan, stormwater master plan, all plans that have all these projects. And this is one of the things that was identified to be done sooner rather than later. So it's worth, like we've said, resurrecting, finding a consultant who can dig into the weeds on this and, and work on this plan that's 10 years old.
All right, well, I think that we would be looking to have a motion to let me sign the application when it's finished for this, for this, this agenda item.
Sign the resolution.
Good question.
Well, I thought it was, I thought it was signing the application, but approving the resolution. But I'm, oh, sorry. Yeah, go ahead, Rosemary.
I'm sorry. I'm just curious, what is the amount of the grant? And are we, is the city matching it? Or do we know that yet? I'm just curious.
Yeah, great question. It's, it's just like the penny grant maxed out at twenty seven five. So we'll be doing asking for as much as we, asking for it all and hoping we get something. And then the match is 10% just like the other one, which I have built into my budget.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
You want a motion to, to approve?
Well, I think there was, there was some discussion about what exactly the motion should be. As I, I said, to sign the application and Janet said the resolution. And so I just wanted to, you know, but we'll, we'll clarify that and then.
So, so the resolution, just like the municipal, the bylaw grant, the resolution is a necessary piece with the planning commission chair's signature, basically telling ACCD that the planning commission, you folks are on board and, and with Michael's signature that this is something that we want to pursue. The, this application is actually in their electronic, it's called the Gears Grant Management System. So while this is a great, beautiful paper copy, I literally will copy and paste narratives into an electronic form. And I think I can submit. And if I can't, the municipal authorizing official is Nicholas. He would literally hit the submit button. So that's how the mechanics of this one works. The other one was a submit the PDF to the department that it went to. This one is electronic.
Great. So then it would be looking for me, giving me the authorization to sign the resolution. I think that would, that would be our motion.
I would make that motion to authorize Chair Hallian to sign the resolution to appear before council next week.
A second.
All right. Thanks. We have a motion and a second on that. Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Raise your hand or say, say hi. All right. I forgot to, I forgot to ask for extensions before. Becky, you, you have your hand raised. Yeah. Oh, sorry.
No, that's one of the automatic features because I voted and it was like, oh, you're raising your hand. Sorry about that.
That's hilarious. All right. Anyway, any extensions? And I didn't know about that feature. That's funny. All opposed? All right, is unanimous. So we have our approval, the motion passes. Yeah. And now we can talk about it in a little bit more depth. Is that in the wrong order? Maybe I don't yet, since we roughly knew what we were talking about. Anyway. Next up, item five, three is reviewing the draft is in the packet as we discussed. What's in there is, you know, minimal bits. The big picture, though, as we talked about last time, was that we're looking for somebody to help us update the remembering this right from the minute, this, this, the Summer Street Plan that exists so that it is implementable.
Just for fun, it was the Elm and Summer Street Plan affectionately known as the Elmer Plan.
Wow, was it at some point?
Yes.
I always think of it as the, what, what is, what the full name? What is it? Main Street to Summer Street Master Plan 2012 or something like that.
Elmer was easier.
All right. Yeah, Becky, go ahead.
I do now have a question. Can we get what we need for $27,000?
Consultants are usually charging in the ballpark of at least 25 to 30. So more than likely, even with the bylaw modernization grant, we're not going to get everything we ask for. We're going to get just a piece of it. So other parts of my budget will pick up where we need to pay for this. Just like this one, it would work the same way. It would be lovely if we were granted, you know, the, the full amount. But everybody's applying for grants these days. So they're, they're doling it out in pieces, right? Again, I have built into my budget the ability to pay for consultants and cover any differences. And interestingly, two years ago now, when we hired the consultant to update our zoning, when all was said and done, we paid her over $27,000. So everyone's charging for an hour and, and that's how it works out. everyone's charging for an hour and, and that's how it works out.
That does seem like a bargain. I guess that's why I'm asking, like, I would have expected something like this to be in the above the, you know, in the like fifty to seventy five versus range, and I don't have much to base that on. I just thought twenty thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars seemed like, um, yeah, yeah. Okay. So what I'm hearing is you have additional funds budgeted for next year to fill gaps. Um, and do the matching pieces that we might need for these two grants. Those projects we're, we're looking for grants for. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think that I was hoping that it would, you know, sort of reduce the scope of whatever we're requesting to say that it is an update to an existing plan. I'm not sure whether that is true. So I think one of the things that I will wonder is how we, how we know how to make a realistic estimate to, you know, for, um, for the funding. It's not something that, you know, I, I don't know certainly. I think that we're, you know, like in the, the, um, uh, in the universe of all the people that I would ask, I would, I would turn to the CBRPC and say like, what do things cost, guys? You pay for things all the time, like what, you know, what's, what's reasonable?
Right. And they may be somebody that, um, uh, bids on this to help us. And we actually, as a member municipality, have so many hours which equates to so many dollars to get them to help us on things. So, you know, that might be something that we can say. If you're going to charge this, let's use this much as our, as our usage. But once it goes to RFP, we'll just, you know, see what we get. With the shortage of consultants out there.
Yes, yes. It's a sad, sad truth. Um, oh, David, were you raising?
Yeah, just, just a couple of thoughts. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of glad to hear it's something that's, you know, it's in the municipal plan. It's fairly high priority in the capital improvements list. Because in order for this to be a compelling application, it has to be something more than, we've had this plan on the shelf for, for six or eight years or 10 years. And we want to update it if there's no immediate plans to do anything but put it on the shelf for another 10 years. So, you know, I think to be compelling, it has to, you know, definitely point that out and it might even be worth talking to Public Works just to make sure they're on board and be able to say in the application. You know, that, that they're, you know, they're on board just because that shows some coordination between the the planning operation and the people who actually do stuff, you know, out in the streets. To make, you know, just, just some thoughts to try to make it a compelling application, because I'm sure there will be a lot of competition. And, you know, they're going to be looking for, for applications that are compelling and that will lead to something happening.
Yeah, I agree. I think that would be, uh, it would be useful if we could, if we can get that, uh, that show of support. I mean, definitely as Bill expressed to me, like, one of the things that makes it hard to take action on it was, uh, one, saying like, it's been there for a while and two, um, lack of specificity. So if we can, we can say all that's in the way is this, that would be, uh, um, I, I think that's a, you know, it's a strong argument. Um, Janet, I have a question, uh, which is, do you feel like you have um, the, the stuff that you need to, um, to fill out the rest of this? Or is there something that you'd look for from any of us to, um, you know, to, to help get things in order?
Uh, I'm, I, the answer is I don't know yet. Um, I need to block off some time and, uh, dive into this. This is very similar to the last planning grant application. But I want to, uh, be sure that I, like you said, have everything that I need. Um, you have any questions answered? And I'm, I'm happy to share drafts with the planning commission via email, just just to keep it moving. If anyone wants to put their eyes on it for sure. Uh, deadline is December one, which usually means in the electronic system, close of business. But sometimes that could mean midnight if you can get it to work. If you're really jammed up at eleven thirty, you never know if the system's going to behave. Um, but I am gone, uh, Thanksgiving week, coming back on Wednesday. Uh, still on vacation, so I really want to hammer down on this, uh, next week. So, um, I, I'll know better once I really dive deep. Whether I need more or just would really truly appreciate many sets of eyes on the application. And will be happy to accept comments and edits. Always helps people look at it.
Yeah, I think it would be, uh, great to send it out. Um, certainly speaking for myself, if there's anything that you need from me, just, uh, you know, ask whenever. Um, I don't want to, um, yeah, I, I don't want to, I don't want to let a little thing stand in the way.
Right. I appreciate that. Thank you. And I want to be respectful of everyone's time because, you know, you, you all have, you know, day jobs and lives as well. So I will not send out something and then go, okay, I just fixed another section and all of a sudden you get a flurry of emails. I will be very respectful of your time and, uh, get you something to look at initially.
All right. Great. Well, we'll expect, uh, um, you know, you know, uh, a flurry of activity behind the scenes and to get hit with stuff at some point next week. So then we'll, uh, you know, uh, well, well, we'll, we'll have our, uh, I'll look at that, things and, uh, uh, give you anything that seems like it will help.
That would be great and I appreciate that.
Uh, did anybody have any, uh, any, any questions or anything to add on this one? I realize it's, you know, it's, it's light so far. Well, um, okay, if not, then we can uh, move on to our last little things. Um, we can confirm the date of our next meeting, which according to me is December eighth. Did I get it right?
Yes.
Yeah, great. Cool. Um, uh, does that work for everyone? Okie dokie. That's when we'll do it. Next item, uh, on the staff updates, was there, uh, anything other than what's in the packet that you wanted to add, Janet? Or any, any questions that anybody wanted to bring?
Um, just, uh, let's see, Tuesday night, city council's up at Alumni Hall. At six thirty, there is the revealing, is that the right word? Of the Berry Victory sign and Amanda can truly speak to all of that. She's been heavily engrossed in that. Yay. Uh, but it's, uh, essentially our ARPA evening. Um, I have, I am going to be doing a department presentation on my capital priorities and then, uh, the mayor will open it up to, uh, those folks who have submitted letters of, of interest for ARPA projects and then anyone who's in attendance, um, that just has suggestions. So city council next week is at Alumni Hall.
Amanda.
Sorry, the raised hand wasn't working fast enough. Just to clarify, Janet, the unveiling is at five thirty?
Five thirty. Okay. Thank you. That's right. Cause city council's at six thirty. Yes.
Yeah, there's like a partial, like part of it's at six and then the forums at six thirty. I don't the package should go out like today or tomorrow, right? Um, to clarify that, um, and I won't say anything more on it because it's kind of a fun surprise, uh, but just that you should all come at five thirty to the auditorium. It's really cool. And I've been working on it for a couple of weeks with the city manager and other city staff. And it's going to be a really cool thing. So you should come to the ARPA forum, but also come to the unveiling at, uh, at five thirty.
And that is, that's next Tuesday, right?
I don't want, I'm not trying to get you to spoil the surprise, but like generally what's happening, I missed that. Like I didn't quite catch it. I believe, I believe the, uh, language, uh, I discussed with the city managers this afternoon is the unveiling of a piece of Berry's history that has special, special significance to veterans. How's that? Awesome. Okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
Is that open to the public, Amanda, or?
Yes, very much so and, and encouraged.
Oh, okay. Great. Thanks.
All right. Uh, anything else on, uh, our staff updates?
No, but if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If you've all figured out how to clone, I'm ready and willing.
You know, uh, fiction has, uh, has taught me that never goes well. Uh, all right. Well, Amanda.
Janet, did the, uh, did the interview for the permanent administrator seem to be promising? And if, have you had other interest in the position?
Um, I, I don't know that I'd use promising. Um, a very young, exuberant, uh, woman. Um, comes with a lot of computer experience, um, promising maybe, uh, I, but lo and behold, I've got someone who claims they're interested and is going to be submitting a resume early next week. So I'm, I'm, it would be lovely to be able to interview someone else just for the sake of, of not, not promising something, you know what I'm saying is, uh, I don't want to be in the, in the situation that I'm hiring for the sake of hiring. So, um, I'm hopeful that the other person will submit their, their resume and cover letter. And if not, we'll continue talking with this, with this resident of Berry City.
Well, we're pulling for you.
Thank you. Yeah, I desperately am too. Nothing on the junior planner front. Um, I did talk with um, my, my counterpart in Waterbury. He gave me a couple of other places I might be able to, um, advertise. So I need to work with the HR manager to figure out what he's doing, if he's done anything and should I be doing it or should he be doing it? So there's that and still absolutely nothing for the assessor, unfortunately.
David.
Has city considered hiring, um, somebody to help with the job search?
Um, I don't know the answer to that, but we have, we have recommended and strongly suggested that repeatedly. So that's really, um, I can ask whether that with where they, where they, Nicholas, the manager and Rick, the HR manager are at with it. Uh, we've got multiple positions open as you're aware. If you go to the, the website, there's multiple positions open. So. The best answer is I don't know, David. Um, I'm hopeful.
Would it be helpful if the planning commission made, took a position on that? Or would it be unhelpful?
Well, anything's helpful, um, but it they're fully aware that I desperately need the bodies. So.
Well, shall we move on to round table? All right. Uh, does anyone have anything, uh, they would like to bring to the planning commission? Before we depart, I'll, uh, just let, uh, anyone raise their hands. Start with Amanda.
Just very briefly, I can drop the link in the chat too, but the ARPA survey that's going to gather additional information in addition to that forum on next Tuesday is now live. Um, and anyone who wants is invited to, to fill it out. Um, I know I got it as a chair of a different committee to pass on to the members of my, um, my board. So I can drop it in the chat for anyone who would like to.
I'm supposed to email it to you guys. I haven't yet. Came in earlier today. Um, so I'm going to send you an email just pro forma, but it's, it's also going to show up in the chat.
In front porch forum today as well.
Uh, anything else? Trying to think. I don't think I have anything. Well, excited about our grant applications. Fingers crossed for all the things. Uh, all right. Well, if we have nothing else, then let me look for a second and make sure. No, I'm not missing anything. Okay. I would hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Motion chicken. I'll do it.
All right. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Rosemary, seconded. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
That's no one. All right. We are adjourned, everyone. Thanks very much. And, uh, well, we'll be getting emails, uh, right, you know, in the next week. All right.
Thanks, thanks, Janet.
All right.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
You too.
You too.
Thanks.